Yeah, okay. Is that, do you guys see that? I saw it, I saw it on the elevator, there's a, there's a, uh, credit card in here.
No, I think Rob's in B.
Yeah, I couldn't see, I tried to look in there for about a minute. What's going on? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I don't know what that was. Yeah, I just tried it like, it looked like it was like twice or three times. Was it? Was it tireless? I think that was like a tire right there. That's odd, yeah. It just says the account was locked out.
Good evening, and welcome to the, is this thing on? Okay. I can't hear the pleasant hum of my own voice through the speakers. Uh, good evening and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for December tenth, um, please call the roll.
Alderman Strochek is excused, Alderman Tolaco. Alderman Meyer.
Here.
Alderman Hancher.
Here.
Alderman Bach.
Here.
Alderman Parrish.
Here.
Alderman Brad. Alderman Gephardt.
Here.
And Mayor Nervin.
Here. First up, we have approval of the meeting minutes from October thirtieth and November twelfth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, are there any comments or corrections on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, oh there, now it's really working. Hearing and seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we have two lengthy discussion items, so we'll try our best to get through these, we've got an hour. Um, try to keep it around a half hour each, so there's enough time to get through all of it. Um, first up, we have the overview of the draft updates to the MEQ one, Thiensville Bike and Pedestrian Way Plan. There is one person who registered to speak, so I think in the interest of getting public comment in and making sure we don't miss time for that, we'll take, uh, take that individual now, it's Alan Sigalno. Um, two oh four Division Street, uh, supports and wishes to speak. Come to the podium, sir.
Thank you, Alan Sigalco.
Sigalco, okay, thank you.
I want to speak in favor of the proposal with, from what I've read on the website. I live on Division Street, I am not a MEQ, I'm not a citizen of MEQ one, I'm a citizen of Thiensville. You own the south side and manage that of Division Street, and Thiensville owns the north side. On a Saturday morning, in one hour, I counted forty-five people walking past, good weather, correct. But forty-five people, I can't tell you how many more on that Saturday, were walking past my house or riding their bicycles past my house. It funnels the traffic, funnels from Westchester Lakes, it funnels from west of, uh, Bunty Rock, it funnels from Thiensville to the north, up into, uh, where Bunty Rock turns and heads east, and, uh, it goes all the way to Wawatosa Road, as the bike path goes all the way to Wawatosa Road. You can follow bike trails all the way through those subdivisions, and they all end up on Division Street. Nobody in their right mind, I would think, would want to ride a bicycle on Bunty Rock. Especially that area, uh, south of Division, it's very, very dangerous, uh, to take that route. But they take Division Street and they get to the, uh, library, they get to the, um, uh, pool, they get to the downtown here, to the restaurants, and, uh, they participate in MEQ one's activities. So I would encourage the, the, uh, the body to consider this proposal, which has some improvements for Division Street, and until that gets done, which might be years from now, I'm hoping that there would be someone that we could appeal to, uh, citizens, uh, to, uh, the village of Thiensville and to you, to, to get, um, some temporary signage up, so that something could be seen by traffic, by drivers and by pedestrians and by bicyclists that know that this, there is some concern for their safety on these two streets. So, that's my concern, uh, and I don't know who to, and I've asked people, I don't know who to, uh, to go to. I've been at the meetings here for the Bike Path Commission, uh, regularly over the last months, and, um, uh, would like to see this move forward. At least, uh, if nothing gets done immediately, as far as capital improvements, that there could be temporary signage. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Uh, would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, um, thank you, sir, we'll get on to the presentation. Cole's gonna walk us through this one.
Yeah, I'll give a very quick overview and then turn it over to Craig here, um, to give the update on the, the plan update for, um, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. Um, so Craig Heebner is here from Grave tonight, um, hoping to get any high-level comments from, uh, committee members tonight. Um, this is a working draft, so if there's smaller, smaller-scale comments or anything like that, um, I'd just encourage you all to pass those on to me, and then we can, um, discuss those at Bike Way Commission and, um, get them to Craig for consideration in the, in the plan, so, um, without further ado, I'll pass it off to Craig.
Great, thank you, Cole, uh, again Craig Heebner, I'm an urban planner with Grave, uh, but on our project team, we obviously are a full-service engineering firm, and so I work closely with traffic, transportation engineers, um, and landscape architects as part of this plan. In your packet was a draft report and draft appendices, I want to preface that the draft in your packet is the first time that you're seeing this, but also the commission that, uh, Grave and our staff has been working with, it's the first time that they're seeing this draft as well, so it's new recommendations on behalf of us as a consultant team that still requires your input, as well as the commissions which will, uh, happen moving forward. What I want to do today is just give a high-level overview of what this draft report includes and then have more conversation, um, and question and answer. Um, so here is the table of contents in the draft plan, it includes, uh, background introduction, existing conditions, including, uh, crash analysis, some, uh, bicycle and pedestrian data counts that were assembled, assessment of existing conditions, and then we get into recommended bicycle and pedestrian networking facilities, recommended policies and programs, implementation, and then detailed appendices. As far as the big vision for this, uh, plan, we identified four different goals and objectives, and I won't read them verbatim here, but it's important to, to keep this in mind with any of the recommendations that, that are included in, in the report. Uh, first, facility design, we want to ensure that design of the actual facilities are designed for all ages and abilities, and also using appropriate design features and standards. Routes and connections, we want to connect residents to destinations and have continuous bicycle and pedestrian facilities whenever possible. Public safety and education, we want a holistic approach to improving safety for bikes and peds, um, that's comfortable for all to walk and bike, and finally, intergovernmental coordination. It's important not only for MEQ one and Thiensville to work together, but there's a lot of, uh, state, county, and other jurisdictions that, that we want to work together to see the fulfillment of this plan. As part of this planning process, over the past six or so months, there's been a variety of different engagements, there was an online survey, uh, there was an actual, uh, display booth at your Taste of MEQ one event, um, a couple of months ago. There were stakeholder meetings with neighboring jurisdictions, Milwaukee County, Washington County, um, Ozaki County and other, uh, nearby jurisdictions, as well as monthly meetings with the Joint MEQ one-Thiensville Commission. Oops. I did want to highlight just a couple of things from the engagement, uh, that I think are really telling and, uh, influenced some of the recommendations. Um, on the top left, the priorities, when asked what should be prioritized addressing unsafe crossings and intersections, more on-street infrastructures such as paved shoulders or bike lanes, as well as investing more in off-street infrastructure like trails, received the highest, uh, feedback. We asked if citizens and residents would support a tax increase, uh, so the different variety of responses there actually supported a range of either twenty-five, fifty to a hundred dollar, um, tax increase for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar assessed property in, in, in the city. Looking at walking and bicycling to school, we asked a question where, um, two-hundred-and-thirty-four respondents indicated, uh, that they had children, and when asked whether their child walks or bikes to school, only four percent indicated yes, and eleven indicated sometimes. And of those who responded no, thirty-three percent indicated it is because it's unsafe, and fifteen percent because it's too far. I think it's just interesting to note that, um, as one lens, uh, for potential recommendations, uh, related to your schools within the community. On the far right, uh, the survey also included, uh, asking residents what are their most important corridors that they wanted this plan to address, um, from different improvement categories, as you can see, ranked from top to bottom there, the different, uh, roadway corridors that were identified. Within the plan, there is a documentation of your existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and I know this is a lot to look at, but think of kind of two big categories, you have on-street facilities, and you have off-street or off-road facilities. The different colors on this map represent different widths of those different facilities, so, um, if I kind of transition to the next slide here, as far as on-street facilities, there's paved shoulders and there's bike lanes, these are two different pictures that kind of depict what those, uh, facilities look like. And then for off-road facilities, um, this is a picture actually just south of MEQ one road on Swan Road. Um, and for off-street facilities, we have sidewalks with, uh, which I think everyone would understand, um, what those are. Shared use paths, which would be your Ozaki interurban trail, or also in some of your subdivisions where there's a cul-de-sac, there's now kind of a trail connecting two different cul-de-sacs, so that's a shared use path. A side path is similar to a shared use path, but the difference is that it runs parallel to your roadway corridors, and typically is within right-of-way, so, the difference again, shared use path and side path, side path is just running parallel to your roadways, and then unpaved trails. The plan outlines different constraints and opportunities in the assessment, some of the constraints are gaps in the network. There's nothing more frustrating as a bike or a pedestrian, uh, when you're riding on a facility and all of a sudden that ends, where the sidewalk ends or a bike, uh, facility ends, so we do have that, uh, situation throughout, um, MEQ one and Thiensville, and something that, um, is a gap. Barriers, uh, the Milwaukee River obviously is a huge, uh, barrier right now to east-west travel, and something that's identified in the plan. Design flaws, uh, intersections often lose the different facilities that are designed on the different corridors, so looking to improve those, as well as undersized facilities, um, I know the colors are hard to see here, but, um, there's a large number of paved shoulders, for example, the usual minimum of those paved shoulders, uh, best practice is four feet wide, and you have a large number of paved shoulders that are under that four-foot width, so something to be aware of for sizing appropriate, uh, design facilities. And then, uh, safety concerns, crash history, um, facility usage ambiguity, references that, um, sidewalks are allowed, uh, or bicyclists are allowed to, to ride on, on sidewalks, but that does sometimes cause confusion to pedestrians, not knowing whether or not, uh, bikes should be or shouldn't be, um, on those sidewalks. As far as opportunities, um, what this, uh, graphic shows here is what the plan identifies as high-use travel corridors. So everything in red, um, is identified as a high-use travel corridor, and these either include existing bike and ped facilities or are opportunities that we would recommend include, um, either new or improved, um, facilities. And the reason why is that they connect a high, uh, high-demand destination such as schools, um, employment centers, recreation, or other shopping center destinations. Um, they're key east-west and north-south routes, so obviously the Ozaki interurban trail is a primary north-south route, but how do, uh, the community members get to east and west and connect to that major north-south regional trail? So there's a desire for improved east-west, uh, routes throughout this, uh, map that are identified. And then the second item, the regional corridors, um, MEQ one and Thiensville, uh, are not alone, there's other jurisdictions, uh, Ozaki County, Washington County, and Milwaukee County, all that have regional trail plans, and that's what this map is highlighting, and the draft plan outlines what those plans are for those different jurisdictions that MEQ one and Thiensville should be aware of when doing, uh, facility planning. So what are we recommending in the plan, there's a variety of different on-road and off-road facilities. Um, they range, um, anywhere from low levels of protection, we would call them, to more high levels of, uh, separation or protection from vehicles, um, and different users. The key thing, I think, that I want to just highlight here, when you get to the off-road facilities, um, there's a variety of different ways that you can approach bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Um, really, in the ideal situation, you want to separate bicycles and pedestrians, but obviously that's not always feasible, whether that's a cost, whether that's a physical barrier, and those are important things that you as, um, a committee of the whole really need to, to evaluate as part of this process. But the final, um, kind of bottom two right there, side path, is really meant to accommodate both pedestrians and bicyclists, but they need to be designed appropriately, uh, from a width perspective, uh, to ensure that they're safe. Um, as far as pedestrian, uh, facilities, sidewalks, side paths, and shared use paths, again, side paths and shared use paths accommodating both, uh, pedestrians and bicyclists. Within the plan then, uh, this map outlines, um, a draft recommendation for different bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Uh, they range from again, um, sidewalks, side paths, expanded paved shoulders, bike lanes, um, a bicycle boulevard, which I didn't, uh, define, but for those who aren't aware, um, of that terminology, it's not actually a boulevard, uh, but it's really looking at some of your local streets and how to implement different traffic calming elements, so that it really makes it more friendly for bicyclists to use those roadways. So there's things like, uh, speed bumps potentially, or curb bump outs, or traffic circles within intersections, as well as just basic signage or pavement markings that identify it as a bicycle route. Um, also on this map, you'll see different text blurbs, those are specific spot improvements. Um, these are often at intersections or current, uh, conflict areas that have been identified as part of the, as part of the crash analysis, uh, portion of this plan. Um, I won't go through all this, but within, uh, the plan itself, it's broken down into different north-south corridor recommendations, east-west corridor recommendations, as well as spot improvement recommendations. And each recommendation includes the location, the extent of that improvement, and then the recommended improvement that should take place. And what you'll see is different, um, items there identify a priority corridor for different, um, recommendations. And again, that symbol indicates that the recommendation is on that high priority, or, or high-use travel corridor, and should really be considered for prioritization, um, for different improvements. So again, east-west corridor recommendations, um, I can come back, um, if there's any Q and A discussion for those. But the final thing, the final slide I wanted to leave you with is, uh, within the appendix, and part of, over the next month or two, what our consultant team wants to do is identify, what are the important, uh, recommendations that really demand a graphic or kind of a, a visual that will help aid in, in what this recommendation could be? This is the intersection of the Ozaki Urban Trail, uh, interurban trail with Donjust Bay Road. Um, and what this has shown here is a potential redesign of this crossing. Uh, right now, it currently is skewed crossing, meaning that it's crossing Donjust Bay at an angle, um, and it's also adjacent to the railroad track, so there's a variety of different things that, um, are limiting visibility, both from pedestrians but also for vehicles approaching this crossing. So what's proposed is a realignment of the trail to cross ninety degrees perpendicular. There's also the introduction of a central concrete median, uh, that would provide horizontal deflection, or basically the vehicles traveling on this road would see that median and have to slow down and actually physically turn slightly, uh, to go around that median. So it's an extra level of visual aid to, to vehicles to slow down and recognize that this is a pedestrian crossing. So within the appendix of the plan, we, uh, envision doing this type of improvement visualization for the important recommendations, uh, that you as a, uh, city and village want to see. Um, with that, I know it was very brief, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions, um, or have any dialogue. So thank you.
Thank you, um, anyone from the committee have any questions, uh, Alderman Bach?
Thanks for pulling all this together. Um, I'm, I'm glad, glad to see this, I'm, uh, been an avid road biker in MEQ one for thirty years, so, um, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's good, good, uh, that some attention has been, um, in this area. You know, the, I was talking to the other committee before, one of the things that I didn't see is that there are all these little small subdivision bike path connections. So for example, I live near the Highland House, and if I want to, on my downtown route, what I will do is just take those small interconnecting bike paths and end up, I think, what is it called, Riverview Park on Grace Avenue, is that the name of it? And that goes to River Road, then I can take River Road all the way kind of to the Milwaukee Country Club, and then hit the, uh, interurban trail, um, in Brown Deer, near Brown Deer Park. So, and I do that to avoid Highland, basically, because it's, uh, you know, as you pointed out here, it's a mess. So there's all those little connections that are in the network too, some are in better shape than others, but, um, you know, th- those are there as well. You know, my thing is, there's a lot here in this, you know, that, I'd be happy with some small improvements. You know, you noticed around the city some nice improvements on Humboldt in, in Milwaukee, big improvements there for bikes. Lake Drive, Shorewood in Milwaukee, some big improvements for bikes. If you could pick some of those areas and make some improvements, that would be kind of, uh, that would be kind of a win, uh, I think. There's little things you can do from this, and there's, there's a lot of big things here. Um, I mean, e-bikes was brought up in this report, I mean, that's, I don't know if anybody has a hand on that, but I see kids riding around on e-bikes on sidewalks, big, huge, fat tire e-bikes. And, you know, going to school, you know, and that's, there's a lot of issues with that. I think the gentleman who spoke about the intersections at the interurban trails on the roads in MEQ one, there's probably little things you can do there. You could put those yield signs, those tent yield signs at the intersections just in the summer to let people know, hey, this is an intersection, and those could be removed then in, in, in the fall, because you really can't see, uh, you know, bikes, and there's little things you could do like that. I guess my biggest thing is, when you do reports like this, and I remember years ago, MEQ one did some kind of bike study, and there was all kinds of good ideas, and I was super excited about that, but then kind of got lost. So how can you take this report and make it actionable? How can you pick out the real priorities, instead of getting lost in these a hundred and fifty things that are up here? Pick out what's important to the city, put some timelines on there, what's actually doable with finances, and, and, and make it happen. Otherwise, this is just going to be another report that's lost, and we're be talking about this in twenty years. So, uh, those are my suggestions.
Those are good comments, um, one of the more important things I think we can do is, is under the intergovernmental, um, set of recommendations within is, we've got fairly major projects coming for MEQ one road in the coming years, and I think we really need to use this port, report to lean on WISDOT to make MEQ one road a more inviting place. I've, I've, I think I've taken my road bike on it twice, and it's terrifying, and I'm pretty confident on a road bike. Um, and there's, there's generous room on the side, it's not well-marked, but it's still terrifying to road bike next to, you know, fifty, sometimes faster, fifty mile an hour or faster traffic, I know it's posted forty, but let's not kid ourselves, that's not what's happening. And that would be a huge improvement, there's other recommendations, I know it's been talked about for years, like the, the Donjust Bay Bridge. And it's, it's a great idea, it's just a, it's just a financial football to deal with, it's, the last estimate I think was north of twenty million dollars, it's more than our whole annual operating budget for the city, so. Things like that, while they might be nice, are going to be really hard to accomplish, perhaps impossible. Um, but if we can get better bike passage on MEQ one road, that'd be a huge win, because, yeah, the east-west connectivity is, is poor. I, I live on the east side, I'd love to take the OIT to go north-south, but I'd just take Lake Drive, because I'm right on Lake Drive. If I could get to the OIT easier, I'd take that in a heartbeat. Um, Alderman Meyer?
Uh, thank you for the report. Um, couple, couple of questions, one is that I'm, was kind of surprised we had such a low response back from the, from the survey for such an important topic, that, um, only have, was it three hundred and forty-four or something responding on that, which is historically a little different from what MEQ one normally does in, in surveys, normally they're pretty high, uh, in the response. How did you get or send out the information to, to get a response back from the people, I mean, just briefly, if you?
Uh, we both, uh, issued it as part of the, um, the weekly newsletter that goes out to, I don't know, something like three thousand, at least, emails, um, and then they also, uh, advertised it as part of this event, um, and I think that's pretty much all we did, we didn't do mailings or anything like that.
I was a little surprised we had such a small response inside of that report. Um, the other thing is that, um, MEQ one road, and I know, uh, the mayor brought up some of this stuff, but, uh, in the meantime, uh, there's some things we can do, like signage to say, you know, use the bike if that's legal to use the sidewalks inside there, instead of having people using the roadway, which is pretty dangerous for them to be on that. You know, and if there was some recommendations to put some kind of signage on and say, please use the walkway or something if you're biking, if that would help in that situation for it. Um, and, um, your thoughts on that, but the, uh, the other thing was that, what are your thoughts on the cross rock we're just kind of finishing up over on MEQ one road? Is that adequate to that, uh, your thoughts on that?
Um, can you specify which intersection on MEQ one road?
Um, I'm talking about the one on MEQ one road that, that we just completed up with, uh, down by the?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's a great, obviously, example of an improvement there, um, as far as what can be done at intersections. I think every intersection is unique, um, when, when we're crossing here, so there's different things that you can or cannot do. Um, but I think it's, it's obviously an improvement, um, from what was there previously.
And, and the final one was that there was a lot of, some of the recommendations like, uh, doing Wawatosa Road from MEQ one road up to Pioneer and, and, and doing those, we got, we got a lot of pinch points that, along that especially like, you know, from Freystad to MEQ one road, which is, you know, that'd be some major construction of the road itself compared to, you know, because of the situation that it is, the ditches are right off to the side and stuff like that, so, some of that stuff is, um, very expensive to do, and don't even know if there's a land there to do that type of stuff for it, so.
Yeah, and, and, quick comment, um, we were just talking before about, this is obviously a, you know, a professional list that they're putting together on best practices for, um, connecting points in our community and, and all that good stuff, and, um, part of having these studies is, um, it's, it looks better for, um, both grant applications for funding, and like we brought up before with DOT with improvements, if you can show that your community does have a plan that indicates some sort of improvement, then when a different, um, jurisdiction is going forward and doing a project on that, then it's a, it's a little bit more of a reason to do those improvements.
Thank you.
Any other comments, we're, we're getting a little, we'll take, take a couple more, but we got to get to the next plan, so maybe a couple more, um, Alderman Hancher?
Hello, um, I live on the, uh, southwest part of, of MEQ one, and we were probably one of the first areas to get a bike path on Donjust Bay and Swan Road. And I'm all for putting in bike paths that are, make sense for people to travel around the city. But the one thing that I see a problem, and I don't know, uh, how this can be solved, after a number of years, it needs to be repaired. And who's going to repair it, and who's going to come up with the money? Because right now, on Swan Road between, uh, Donjust Bay and MEQ one road, the bike path is in need of a repair. You have, uh, vegetation growing on it, there's, uh, cracks, same thing that's happening on, uh, Donjust Bay. So my question is, whose responsibility is it going to be to, and fund it? You're going to put all these bike paths, but who's going to be responsible and responsible for the money to repair them when they need to be fixed?
Yeah, it, it will depend on, you know, which roadway we're talking about, obviously, there's, you know, there's county jurisdictions, there's state jurisdictions, and then there's local, local roads, so that's one lens. Um, additionally, there's opportunities, uh, different grants that can be pursued, as well as, um, other, uh, impact fees are, uh, discussed as part of this draft plan to discuss other opportunities for different, uh, financing outside of your capital, uh, budgeting that can occur.
So I guess my suggestion would be, moving forward, is that before we put in all these bike paths, which I'm all in favor of, is to also include, how are they going to be paid for, for, uh, maintaining them? Because if they, if you build them and you don't maintain them or, or treat them, then it becomes eyesore or danger, which is opposed to what you wanted to, to make it in the first place.
I, I think regrettably, that one's ours, the one you're speaking of, uh, but that's why when there's been other discussion of privately funded bike paths, it's also included a discussion on also, uh, it's also included a discussion on also, uh, putting some money away for the long-term care thereof, because yeah, it is a, it, it could be, it looked like a gift one day, but it could be a, an Albert Ross financially, you know, years down the road.
Well, I just wanna say on, especially on Swan Road, if you look at, uh, on there from, um, Donjust Bay to Mequon, I mean, it's, it's kinda dangerous for people riding their bike or even running, because there's a, there's a potential lot of accidents that could occur.
Um, Alderman Parrish.
Thank you, great job, we've been greatly looking forward to this report for months. Um, I'm gonna break it up into three comments, first of all, Alderman Meyer's suggestion about, um, kinda short-term projects maybe we wanna consider, such as signage in the short term, uh, that's definitely very important. And then buried in here was, with the bridge over Mequon Road, um, there's really a very little we can do, other than maybe painting yellow um, for the, the lip of, of the sidewalk, and I know we've talked about yellow, and you've brought up, uh, reflectors in the past. We were concerned about those getting knocked off, but, uh, I've gotten plenty, that's probably one of my most common concerns on the north side of the road between Homestead High School, and just the kids going back and forth from Town Center to Homestead, so. I mean, we have to do s- something there, um, and then I'm curious about the DOT project, they're working on, uh, their, their road pavement schedule, so, I mean, these are all requests, we should get into them, you know, here's the signage plan we want. Um, I'll be meeting with Director Lundin and some interested parties about, we haven't talked about other ways to get across Mequon Road, other than these, these key pinch points, but there's a lot of members of the Orthodox community and, and bikers that are crossing at, at night or dusk, um, other areas of Mequon Road, and it is extremely hard to see them, and just thoughtful bystanders have approached me many times about, like, is there anything we can do to make, there's gotta be more visible crossings, it's very dark. Um, I've been looking forward to this report for a very long time, partly because, um, you, you heard that we all, we all have different sidewalk issues in each of our districts. And, um, my concern about the way this report was done, other than the fact that it's excellent, and I wouldn't change it, but I think our job as policymakers is, we do have to take it with a grain of salt, in the sense is, who were those thirty, three hundred and thirty-four applicants? I, you know, some of those were first of all, Thiensville residents, uh, giving input on our, on our bike trail system, um, and then other stakeholders from all over the region using our bike trails. And I think at the end of the day, our job is, what do our, what do our residents want? Um, cause this will cost a fortune, uh, there's a lot of new projects being proposed, and what frustrates me is, I've been trying to get the sidewalk on Range Line from Mequon Road to the school for years now, and then I had to wait, so. And then the study says, oh, are you using this stuff now, no, you can't use it, cause it's a huge hazard. So there, there's bias there, in the sense that you can't rate what you can't use, and where I'm going, so we're working on a public survey. Um, so I don't wanna survey about a survey, but I am tempted, and I'd, I'd like council's support, um, that we should take these corridors, now that you've identified them as areas, and have our residents rank what they think are the important areas. Because I don't feel like my residents have had the chance to weigh in on, on Range Line Road and the connectivity there. And there's eight districts, and we each have about twenty-five hundred residents, so I'm envisioning some kind of, we talked about this at Public Wealth, or some kind of heat map, because each district is trying to generally connect to the schools and the main roads. So I'm just concerned about some of the, the priorities in this report are, are all over the place. I never would've thought about, I've heard about the bridge across the river, but to call that a priority over just fixing the basic sidewalk I wanted on Range Line. Um, I do love where you're going though, with, um, Port Washington Road going all the way down, down Just Bay, so you can get to Donjust Bay Elementary, and then you keep going down Donjust Bay, so you can get all across Alderman Brat's district. And then you can also go north all the way to Mequon Road, so you, if we could actually implement, you would, you would liter- there's certain areas where we could really impact a lot of people, and, and that is partially where I think we should focus our priorities. And no one has contacted me about where I thought the priorities were, and I'm hearing from my residents, so I'm really gun shy about what the people at Thiensville or other stakeholders are saying, so I'd, I'd like to pull our-
I do think, couple things real quick before we move on to the parks, I do think we should repeat some small percentage of this in our larger survey to sharpen that pencil a little bit. And then I think part of the work that the committee will be doing is to assess the prioritization in the report and maybe reorder a few things. So I, I think that's, that's yet to come, cause they haven't even gotten a, a bite of the apple yet, just because of the way the meeting schedule laid out, so. Good comments, though, appreciate that.
And if I may-
Quickly, I would like to move on.
It speaks to both, is exactly that, both your Park and Open Space Board and your Joint Pedestrian and Bike Way Commission do that prioritization annually, and submit those as a part of those capital requests. So that does come to you, where they've, they take all of the recommendations from the report, and they vote on that annually to put them in order, and then make that recommendation to the Common Council for funding. Bike Way at this point, the only source of funding at this point is the Right-of-Way Asset Management Plan, and that addresses both the requirements for the existing infrastructure, and what the demand on those dollars are for that, as well as any requests for any additional capital projects.
Okay, okay, um, we do have to move on, we have to get the, the park plan. Um, I know this was a giant, gigantic document, so I would encourage you to let it sit a while, the back of your head over the holidays, and write out a bunch of your comments and get them to call. Um, it's really, we could probably spend four hours on this one document, it's, I'm not even joking. Um, I had to read it twice to let it fully sink in. Um, but please, I, take a little bit of a homework assignment and come back, you know, around the, the new year and have comments for staff. It is an important report, and I, I know the Bike Way Pedestrian Commission is, is looking forward to taking a crack at it in committee as well. Um, with that, I think we're gonna move on quickly, we'll get the Park and Openspace Plan, we'll try and, try and wrap that up, and I'm sure we'll go over a little bit, we'll try to get it done in about a half an hour, and, um, otherwise, we'll have to make them come back next month, uh, which would mean the consultant for that report would have to come back next month again, and we don't wanna do that to them. Um, so similarly, as we had with the, the Bike and Pedestrian Way Plan, we have a, a comprehensive update to the Park and Openspace Plan, and, um, Park Superintendent Geese is going to give us a little bit of a verbal intro while our consultant hooks up to the AV.
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's my fault. Um, in River Barn's, uh, master plan, so, um, we updated River Barn's master plan, and then we included a new master plan of Catherine Kearney Carpenter Park. Um, also as part of this, um, this scope, uh, we included a playground assessment, um, that we, uh, that's kind of new to what we recommended, or what we requested for the RFP in, uh, twenty-twenty-four's update here. Um, the playground assessment gives us a good, uh, analysis of what our playgrounds look like, what the needs are, um, the safety concerns, and some of the recommendations for the future, uh, not only fixes or maintenance, but, um, maybe possible consideration for replacement. So, um, we also have an incoming, uh, park impact fee analysis, uh, that we're working on, uh, still currently to, uh, consider a possible ordinance amendment for an update to that park impact fee. Um, that'll be at a later meeting, but with no further ado, here's Morgan Shapiro.
Hi, thank you for having me, nice to be here, um, nice to meet you all, my name is Morgan Shapiro, like he said. Um, hopefully, I don't think my presentation is very long, so hopefully I can still get us out of here on time. But yes, without further ado, um, just a very brief overview, if any of you are new to this process, it happens every five years, so it's not a, it's not a long-term plan, but, you know, more of a near-term. And, uh, it's really about keeping up to date with best practices, and also making sure that Mequon is eligible for any, uh, state and federal grant opportunities, which is where a large portion of improvements, uh, end up coming from historically. So, uh, just kind of a brief overview of the content that we submitted for you all. Uh, there's the primary plan, which is, you know, just your basic Parks and Open Space Plan content, uh, per Wisconsin State statute, and then those additional documentations that we have in the appendix, um, that includes the playground safety assessan- assessment, River Barn Park, and then Catherine Kearney Carpenter Park. Um, so I don't have a whole lot of content from the plan, it's a large plan, but one thing that, uh, I wanted to touch on that was interesting was part of the data that we looked at, um, as far as where Mequon falls, um, na- nationwide. And you can see, uh, I'll just decipher this large tables and graphs. Basically, uh, the city has a lot of parkland compared to, uh, compared to the nation, you could see, uh, that's what the figure four-point-one is showing, the acres of parkland per a thousand residents. But if you only look at the amount of parkland that is developed, so, you know, the, the parks that are, you know, actively having recreation and stuff like that, the number does fall more in line with the median for, for national, and what that's saying is that there is a lot of parkland that is currently undeveloped. Um, as you guys may well know already, um, yeah, and s- the graphs are just kind of demonstrating that, that information. Um, another kind of interesting way to look at the data is, uh, doing this mapping, where we y- take a, a, an analysis of all of the city parks and, and move that outwards to say, okay, which, who in the, who in the community of Mequon lives in walking distance of a park? And you can see here in the yellow, that is representing, um, residential parcels, that's how they're zoned currently in the city. And you can see here, Mequon is big, but the parks are tending to be concentrated in, in certain areas, uh, within, within the municipal boundaries. Um, so that kind of gives you a feeler, although I will say, you know, there is additional land within some of these subdivisions that isn't technically classified as, uh, city parkland, but that might account for some of the gaps that you see here. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of the capital improvement plan, but just kind of walk you through how to look at it and interpret it. So there's two portions to the plan, there's the main portion that is looking park by park, uh, what are the recommendations for improvement, and of course, not all of these are going to happen in the next five years. Basically, how this works is, we take, you know, everything that was in the previous five-year plan that wasn't completed, we say, you know, okay, which of this still needs to be done, and then things kind of shift in the priority level as things are taken off the list, things are added to the list, um, and so, you know, even though this is for the next five years, ultimately speaking, you know, there is that yearly process, like they said. Um, and then the facility condition assessment, that was more specifically having to do with a report that was prepared in twenty-seventeen by EMG Corp. And basically, what, all we did for this was update those numbers to account for the increased cost of construction, materials, inflation generally speaking, um, for the three pavilions, Rotary, River Barn, and Ruder. So, um, yeah, that one is more just about taking that existing documentation that has been very useful for, for Mike in being able to make, you know, line item improvements here and there, and being able to give it a more accurate cost update. Um, so as far as the actual, uh, master plans go, um, you can see here, really the only main difference between the previous master plan for River Barn and this one is the addition of pickleball courts, and I put a little red square around it, so you all can see. Um, but yeah, so this has been, you know, a conversation between the Parks Division and the community for a while. Um, and there's, you know, already plans in place, and as well as funding, um, being planned out for the future pickleball, which, um, has garnered a lot of support in our community, uh, engagement. Um, and then this one is for Catherine Kearney Carpenter Park, and there is a lot to decipher here, there's a lot of improvements. If you have specific questions about the details, I feel like Mike is probably better than I am, since our landscape, wonderful landscape architects were the ones that really put the, um, put the work in for these visualizations. But it's really about making sure that this park can be, uh, safer for the dogs that they bring, and, um, while also, you know, being considerate of potential maintenance and cost constraints for the, uh, Parks Division that they're still experiencing, so, you know, trying to figure out what is the best choice for moving forward for Catherine Kearney Carpenter Park. Um, and then there's pricing breakdowns, and I wanted to kind of touch on these, because they're big numbers, um, and I don't want to scare you all with large numbers. I want to demonstrate, you know, while, yes, both of these parks, it requires a substantial funding, not all of, so, a lot of this funding is, is gonna come from a lot of different places. So, you know, this is really going to be a group effort, so to say, to, uh, get these parks to where we're envisioning, and that includes some funding that's already been mapped out, including some private funding, but then also looking towards, you know, future, future, uh, funds. Um, and then the last thing that I'll touch on here is the playground safety assessment, and I just kinda wanted to give you guys a breakdown on how to look at this plan, and so what it started with was visual inspections of all the playgrounds in Mequon, and for example, I'm using, uh, Rotary Park, there was noted that there was a, a crack in the slide. And so this can kinda give you an overview of what happens from there, so first our inspector notices the cracked slide, photographed, documented, and then when we are assessing each playground, based on all of the kind of current best practice metrics for, uh, a safe park, so now you would see that under, you know, slides are smooth and free of debris or other hazards, that is becoming a fail on that, on that list, because there's a crack on the slide, and then looking at, okay, how much would it cost for a replacement like that, a high-level estimate would be about eight thousand dollars. And so that creates a situation where we take all of those playgrounds, and we can say, okay, what would be the cost for immediate and short-term improvements that, uh, could get the park to a place where it's meeting all the safety standards of today? And then compare that to what is the cost of a full replacement for that park. And, um, yeah, I mean, this is a conversation that we can have, and I know Mike has feelings about it as well, but, you know, all of these parks have exceeded their, you know, their general lifespan, so to say, so the long-term goal is to, uh, have new parks for the future, you know, Mequon residents. And, uh, it's just about prioritization for how to make that happen. Um, but yeah, if people have comments about that, um, certainly would love to field them. Um, this is the last slide of my presentation, I do just wanna touch on the mapping, the maps in the appendix, and this is, apologies for this, it was actually a, a previous version that had some mislabels, so city parks were labeled as county parks. We do have the updated versions, and so that would, what would be going to the final document, if anyone wants to see them, I have them available. But just wanted, the actual parks are labeled correctly in terms of name, just not in terms of ownership, so apologies for that. Um, but otherwise, that is my presentation, um, and yeah.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee, another lengthy, um, planning document to review, but, uh, it's very well done, so thank you for, for your efforts there. Alderman Brett.
Yeah, thank you, and, uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I am the Aldermanic representative on the Park and Space Board, along with Alderman Bach. So is, is anyone on the Open Space Board here tonight, I wanna thank you for all the work you've done, um, on Wednesday nights, so. It's been very helpful, very good process. Um, for those who haven't dived into this report yet, um, let me just give you a few Cliff Notes themes from this report that I think would be good to remember. Um, there, a lot of these- Um there, a lot of these, some of these projects do have big price tags. There's no doubt about that. But I think, you know, parks is already very resourceful at looking at partnerships that we have. So whether that be Rotary, the playground with Rotary, uh the Rotary Club. Um then with Riverbarn, the pickleball courts being a partnership with pickleball groups. Um I think that that's really a model we have to look forward on this. I will say though, as a frequent user of the playground with my kids, some of those playgrounds are as old as me. And as my son says, I'm not twenty anymore and I don't have blonde hair. So I think some of those are gonna have to be replaced at some point, like you just can't order the parts. So I think at a future bond program, we're gonna have to look at seriously addressing some of these that are at the end of their lives. Um last point I will have, why I wanna make it that um as we consider the park impact fee, there was a mention in the trail plan on, I think, page forty-six about the impact fee. I would be really cautious to see any of the existing park impact fee go to trails just 'cause it's covering two jurisdictions. So if we look at what we charge, I think is pretty comparable to some neighbor neighborhood and communities. But compared to Whitefish Bay, Antonima Rock, we're well below. So if we think about any potential increases of that, you know, then maybe that could go towards addressing trails. But we have a lot of infrastructure we need to invest in here too. So again, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. It was great working with you all.
Any other questions? Alderman Parrish.
Uh just not to, great job Alderman Brett, uh Mr. Geese. Um this is a lot of work to do this every five years. The only thing I wanna add um is regarding the playgrounds. I've said this before that it's hard to envision how those get to the top of the list. Um such that we, you know, is is it about two million dollars to replace all the playgrounds? Is that kind of what you're saying? And then they're all import, basically there's only one that's in okay condition and.
Yeah, I I think it it it's fair to point out that um I think a lot of the playgrounds are gonna be private, private public partnership. Um I think it's not something where the city is gonna necessarily be on the hook to, you know, figure out where to um find the money for all of the playgrounds. And I think it's it's such a vast range of playground. I mean, if you're looking at Rotary, you know, park playground right now and we're working with Rotary Group on that playground, um like someone said it earlier, but I mean, we're looking at, you know, them proposing a ten million dollar playground for Rotary Park, but it it terrifies me quite honestly. Because if you give me a ten million dollar playground, that means in a finite amount of time, we're gonna need money in perpetuity somewhere to find out where we're gonna, how we're gonna maintain that. And so it, I think, moving forward, we need to wor- have these public-private partnerships, but we also need to really consider how we're gonna maintain these in the future. And I think that's the, that's the answer that, you know, that's why we're here in front of you now is that's part of the reason we did this playground assessment. Is so that we had a, something that we could point to to say, look, these, these need some addressing sooner than later. A lot of them are older, you know, than me, older than Peter, but I think that's where you, we're gonna have to decide how we wanna handle this. And I think that it is public-private partnerships, but we, there's gonna be some money that's gonna have to be kicked in.
So that's where I was gonna go with it, the public-private partnership. I just, I think that we talk about this every year. It's, I'd like to make progress on this, this upcoming year about are we gonna form a group of some kind? And what will its priorities be? Because I I do think it needs, the topic needs leadership. Um and just because Rotary can raise all the money a little easier than the rest of the parks. It does come from a similar pool of of funds and I'd rather the playground replacements be in order of safety and hazard level. So if if there was a group pooling together all these funds and then the Parks Board can make the recommendations based on safety and so on, I'd I'd prefer that be the way to do this. And it's hard, we're never gonna levy two million to replace all this, so we gotta figure it out. Thank you and great job.
Yeah, that's a problem we have to attack on multiple fronts. There, I think there's been talk before of someone forming a Friends at the Parks group who could be the the fundraising arm. Um certainly every year Will and I get requests from the McQuan Thievesville Community Foundation for ideas for smaller donations. Um this year we kind of gave them a couple ideas, but said, you know, wait for the list 'cause we've got, we knew there was gonna be a bunch of good stuff coming out of this report specifically that's right up their alley as well. So now we've got a, an updated document to point to. Um so y- yes, multiple strategies will need to be employed to make progress on some of these items, for sure. Any other comments or questions from the committee? Otherwise, I'm gonna give everyone a similar homework assignment over the holidays for this document as well and to get those, those recommendations and questions or comments in the staff. Administrator Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the committee. Uh this was a lot to digest this evening. Uh great work done by both of the consulting firms uh in partnership with the city. Uh just to dovetail on the mayor's comments, uh I'm looking at Mike and I'm looking at Cole. Would January fifteenth be an appropriate deadline for getting any feedback back from our members of the council and other city staff? If we're looking to wrap these up by January, February of next year, I'm getting a couple of head nods. So uh in order to provide some certitude, January fifteenth is your homework deadline from the mayor. Uh thereafter, we'll get the reports finalized. Um we'll bring them back for ultimate acceptance by this body at a regular meeting of the common council. And then as the keeper of the committee of the whole calendar, if there is interest in doing a deeper dive on either or both of these reports to allow for additional time for discussion and or prioritization or just general policy conversation, um we're happy to get those on the calendar for twenty twenty-five. We've got plenty of open slots right now. Um please let myself or the mayor know of your interest and then we'll, we'll schedule those accordingly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a feeling you're gonna regret saying there's room on the committee of the whole calendar for next year, but we'll fill it up quickly, I'm sure. Uh many other comments from the committee? Looks like none. Thank you again. Um both reports, very excellent and we hope to chip away at those in the coming years and uh put them to use. We just have our planning calendar. Any comments on the planning calendar for committee of the whole? Seeing none, we can move on. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh we're adjourned. And we will reconvene immediately as the Sewer Utility District Commission. Um it's been a while, so why don't we call the roll again? Oh yeah, I, let's call the roll again. It's been an hour.
Is absent. Commissioner Tlaco, Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner Hanscher.
Here.
Commissioner Bach.
Here.
Commissioner Parrish.
Here.
Commissioner Brad.
You.
Commissioner Gebhardt and Commissioner Nerven.
Here. Uh first up, we have approval of the minutes from October thirtieth. Prove. Motion and a second. Any comments, corrections? Hearing and seeing done, all is in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Uh we have just one resolution for consideration tonight, Resolution forty-one fifty-nine. Resolution authorizing termination of a memorandum of agreement for joint ownership and operation of a sanitary sewer television truck with the village, villages of Brown Deer and Shorewood. Uh looks like Director Lundeen's here to give us a, a quick education on how we've been televising sewers for since almost I've been born. Was it nineteen?
I was gonna say.
Nineteen seventy-four?
It was the original purchase and so you might imagine for two communities that were fully developed then and have not added any sanitary sewer sense. And a um new municipality that was otherwise looking to meet the regulatory requirements for inspection requirements, we entered into a joint agreement. And for the time being, it has otherwise worked, but we are reaching the point that whether as a part of the three-party agreement or whether we go alone, that TV truck needs to be replaced. Unlike the villages of Shorewood and Brown Deer that are fully developed, the city of McQuan's length of sanitary sewer has increased over two hundred percent since the time the joint trunk was purchased. And with all of these lovely subdivisions continuing to go in, that linear footage is not going to stop growing at any point in time. So as sewer staff, we are interested in pursuing the purchase of our own sewer truck. In addition to that, we'd be looking for it to have a lateral camera. Unlike the villages of Shorewood and Brown Deer, the city of McQuan owns the laterals up to the property line. And so we'd be looking for a secondary launch of a camera so that we would be able to inspect those that we do not currently have the ability to do and the villages of Shorewood and Brown Deer have no need um for. I do understand that there were a couple of questions about what, if any, residual value there would be to the existing truck that we would be giving up with the termination. It's estimated that the rig has probably a va- residual value of twenty-five thousand dollars, only a third of which would be the city of McQuan's. And we're averaging at this point ninety-five hundred dollars worth of repairs annually. That is split um actually first in thirds and then second based on the linear footage of televising that's been completed every year, so that ninety-five hundred dollars isn't solely uh at the city's cost, but is prorated based on the formula defined in the agreement. And that excludes titling and insurance costs that is also split amongst those communities. So while there is no question that the purchase of a new TV truck will be a cost to the utility, regardless of whether we go alone or together, the cost of the repairs and the age of the TV truck have um far outpaced its value at this point.
Interesting, so we break even, even, break even in three or four years, best case, maybe sooner.
And just to clarify, this is just the termination of the existing joint agreement. Obviously, any contemplation of the purchase of a TV truck would come in the future as a separate approval request.
Sounds good. Alderman Tlaco.
Are there plans, if this truck is failing the agreement between Shorewood and Brown Deer, that they are interested in cost sharing for a new purchase of a truck? And then what is the amount of time that we actually use this? Do we have a storage facility for it? What is a new truck gonna cost us? And is there a better way than ordering like a new truck? Is there a trailer that we could use or like some other type of? I just felt like in the packet, there wasn't a whole lot of information and I feel like this is gonna be a big cost item. So I just like it to be warranted, so I just would like a little bit more information on those questions.
Yep, it is a cost item. It was approved as a part of budget that you just passed in November. So it was contemplated as a purchase in twenty twenty-five before we went through this. We did um include in that budget request the idea that it was a sole discretion. Both the villages of Brown Deer and Shorewood are potentially absolving their interest in a television truck altogether and would go to contracting and no longer own any portion of a vehicle. So knowing that that may be how we go and knowing that we need it, given the length of sewer that we have now and that continues to increase, that's why we're making the request to terminate the agreement. Shorewood and Brown Deer would likely ride theirs out and then do um just contracting moving forward. Not to Shorewood and Brown Deer, we could contract as we do, but the cost per linear foot far exceeds what we would pay for an annualized basis for the truck.
I, I think what was written in the report is we're having trouble finding, getting enough time on the equipment with, with sharing it three ways. So that, that was another impetus for breaking the agreement is we can't even get the time we need with the apparatus today. So if we flipped it around and we bought it and shared it back, I think we'd run into the same problem.
Correct. And so we do need it more time, which is why we're asking to purchase our own in addition to those technologies that we're looking.
What we're doing now is just severing the memorandum of agreement. We are not purchasing a piece of apparatus.
Correct.
So I think.
Saying that, I'm just wondering what is, what are the next steps after that? So if we're terminating an agreement on something that we need to do every five years or three years, whatever it is, what is our plan and what is it gonna cost? You know, looking for the, you know, if we're terminating this, this is what we're using, okay, if we're gonna switch to B, give me the full briefing on how that's gonna happen and what that's gonna cost.
So we would terminate the agreement and then we would bid the truck per the budget, which I can pull up here and tell you what that is. So we have not, I guess the shortest is while we included a budgetary number, um we have not bid out the project or the truck yet. We have demoed some so that we can understand, obviously, there's kind of two components. There's the truck itself and then there's the CCTV um portion. And we're looking to have a CCTV that integrates seamlessly with our GIS system. That's what we use for our annualized reporting requirements with the DNR. And so that is what, if the Sewer Utility District Commission authorizes the termination of the agreement, that would be the next steps. And we did um budget for it, if I can get to it here. For purchase in twenty twenty-five. And it is three hundred thousand dollars, or estimated to be three hundred thousand dollars. We haven't bid it yet.
Commissioner Meyer.
Dovetail a little bit along with Alderman Tlaco's um comment. I'm sure that we're not gonna be using that piece of equipment twenty-four-seven and there's gonna be downtimes during that period of time for it. Um so I would encourage you to have, let's say, like have a schedule or a list or something that if a subsequent city, Brown Deer or whatever, wanted to use that for a period of time, that we're not using that, to have some kind of fee schedule set up for that so that we would be able to do that. Now, not supplementing, I mean, not uh taking away from our schedule, but if it was free during those periods of time and arranged for something, that we would have that schedule all set up for them and made it available to them.
And we may already, the fee schedule contemplates use of equipment at the state rates for equipment, so we may already have that built in, but we can look at whether the fee schedule needs an amendment for that.
Commissioner Parrish.
Thank you. Um I'm struggling to understand why we're terminating the agreement before we have a plan. I'd rather have a plan and then terminate the agreement. And I haven't heard anything yet that you've said, so I'm, so far I'm a no on this. And wha- is there a reason we have to vote for this tonight? I know there's probably a wait for the equipment, but I'm hearing that there's time left and I think we all, and then I heard you say, well, what would the cost be to do a third-party outsource instead of just buying, buying the equipment? You, you haven't provided.
We paid sixty-seven thousand dollars for five hundred feet um a- as a part of the McQuan Road project um that we otherwise um did. And that's a very small portion of what we have to televise on an annualized basis.
You're amazing and it's, it's hard to follow along all your calculus in this, but I'm just saying, I don't feel like I received all the inputs to make a decision and go ahead and terminate this agreement. Um is there any problem if we don't approve it tonight and we just, you come back next month with a little more info? Or is, what's the drawback of that?
The, well, the dr- the impetus for the termination of the agreement is we're required to serve a ninety-day notice. And we assumed that you wouldn't approve us owning two vehicles at the same time. So we need the ninety days to terminate, so we would only own one vehicle at a time. So this was to set that ninety-day timeline for the.
And I know it's in the budget, but it doesn't, I don't know that when we approve the budget, we fully understood this kind of the pros and cons of what we're talking about here. So even though it's in the budget, doesn't mean we can't explore alternatives to save the sewer utility taxpayers even more. Um and again, why terminate something if we don't have a plan? It's, that's my opinion. I'm voting no. Thank you.
I guess I'm clarifying, the plan is to purchase a new TV truck. So this is the first step of doing so by terminating the joint agreement so we can pursue.
So I have a, I have a question. How many feet of sewer are there in our system?
There is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, roughly.
Okay, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
And we are required to do a fifth of that every year.
So how long does it take to, you know, some of these vehicles that we've seen, snowplows and police cars are two years out. So once you make that decision, how fast can you get this vehicle?
Luckily, these are more units, so they're. Luckily, these are more units, so they're available. We just have to choose all of the pieces and parts and then bid it to get the pricing to meet our financial policies.
Give me just a sec here. So if we have that length of sewer pipe and we have to inspect one-fifth of it every year, and hypothetically, we paid the same rate per foot we did with that project for 500 feet, that would be $5 million of year of third-party rental cost. That's probably high, but it's a lot more than $300,000. Just to give the committee a broad, a broad sense for contracting all of it.
Shorewood doesn't have nearly as much sewer.
They're, they're.
Their, their size of their, their length is probably a tenth of that.
Yeah, they're one and a half square miles or 47-ish square miles.
And then their prorated portion is a fifth of that of what they have to do on an annualized basis.
They're, they're very compact. For fun fact, they're the most densely populated municipality in the state. 10,000 people per square mile.
Just one additional question. So with the purchase of this truck, we're guessing about $300,000. What is the life cycle of this vehicle purchase?
Well, again, the, there's the two components. So the truck could be 20 to 25 years depending on that. The TV, the CCTV is generally shorter than that just because of technology and the way that it otherwise goes. But we can change the camera on that multiple times and we have on the truck that we have now. So we can change out the camera multiple times over the life of the truck. Yeah, it's a pretty sizable both to carry the number of people that are required to complete the televising operation and for the safety purposes, we access through manholes and so the placement of the vehicle to keep everyone safe while we're operating the televising equipment and everything. Yes, it's pretty standardized to be a truck. All the televising equipment includes significant computer operations and monitors and everything inside. So yes, a truck is required.
And then just refresh my memory one last time. How much are we paying currently with our current contract with Shorewood per year with the extra?
We're paying 9,500, well, our, our portion of $9,500 through repairs, but the truck was purchased decades ago. So we don't have an annualized cost for the truck, just like we wouldn't if we make a purchase, there wouldn't be an annualized cost. There would just be the upfront cost.
Well, the repairs and then the additional time that we're using it, those costs.
Well, there's no cost to use.
We have a, an agreement with how much time we get.
Correct.
We don't pay by the hour.
No.
No, we just don't get it.
Okay, well, I'm sure this is probably in the city's best interest. I was a little disappointed in this packet material just because I don't feel like it gave me an accurate background also being newer to this to really represent the city correctly. I'd like to see in the future just more of like cost analysis, what's the bottom line and a little bit more detail so that, you know, when I vote on this, I am able to say, yes, this was in our best interest. And I just felt this packet was a little bit relaxed on that.
Any other questions or comments? Or a motion?
I move Resolution 4159.
Second.
Motion of second. Any other comments or questions for staff? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll. There'll be a downstream budgetary impact, so we'll treat it like a budgetary vote.
Commissioner Tlaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Hancher.
Aye.
Commissioner Bach.
Aye.
Commissioner Parrish.
No.
Commissioner Bratt.
Aye.
Commissioner Gebhardt.
No.
And Commissioner Nurban.
Aye.
That concludes the Sewer Utility District Commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Let's take a three or four-minute break for anyone that needs it and we'll be back. I'll, we'll be back at, no, no later, yeah, in four minutes, starting now. I'll set my, set my watch.
Inside, yeah.
I'd like to mention that.
Yeah.
I did not talk to him and I didn't do anything because I was told by email that he and his neighbor had sent out a post over the weekend. Worked everything out. Oh, good. Oh. So.
Yeah, that, I get that. Like when you're on a bike.
Yeah, luckily it's kind of, it's kind of wrapping up quick, but. Yeah. Had to do it.
This is good to see them. I have. Well, let's try.
I think it's good to.
Are you going to ask for that?
Do it again. How's Vanessa suddenly into her job? Oh, she's loving it. They. She just had a board going.
Yeah. That's important. So even if that's the case, here's the way they want these.
So that was a long time ago. In the, in the last week or four, we were going to play in the. Just two, two. Three hours and I was like, the project should have been done.
Yeah, but isn't it?
Break ground soon. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm glad. I have one. They read the part ways. Yeah, I mean, I was just got a, this place that he was on. Good job. Kick it. Three months. Yep. So we still work it from now.
Yeah.
I don't know. Playing bagpipes? Yeah. That's great. That's. Yeah, I saw him somewhere. Okay, cool. Oh, God.
All right. I said four minutes. It was exactly four minutes. Welcome, sorry for the short break. Welcome to the common council meeting for Tuesday, December 10th. Please call the roll. Oh, wait a minute. Pledge of allegiance first. I always do this one out of order.
Pledge allegiance.
Give the flag of the United States of America.
And now the roll.
Alderman Strelcheck is excused. Alderman Tlaco. Alderman Meyer. Alderman Hancher.
Here.
Alderman Bach.
Here.
Alderman Parrish.
Here.
Alderman Bratt.
You.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mayor Nurban.
Here. First up, we have personal appearances and public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. If you desire to be heard on an agenda item, you may be heard when that item is considered on the agenda. Speak into the microphone at the podium. Time limit is five minutes. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public officials reports. I'll go easy on you this month. I've, I have none other than to wish everyone a happy holiday season coming up here shortly and hopefully you can get some rest, visit with family and friends and hit the new year running. Administrator Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the committee. I won't go so easy. I've got a couple of things to report out on here this evening. First, on this evening's agenda, we have a contract for a civic campus master plan. We are seeking to bring in a consultant to help us with a visioning process for the civic campus master plan, which includes City Hall, our community pool, the library, the parking lot adjacent to some of these facilities, as well as Renneke Field and some of the pertinent facilities across Cedarburg Road adjacent to the river. There's been some information floating around within the community that is somewhat inaccurate with respect to the future of Renneke Field. And this information indicates through a petition and other postings in social media that the city has made a decision to shut down Renneke Field and close it for future use. I am here this evening to indicate that that decision has not been made by the city and the process that we'll, we will be going through with the firm that we're looking to hire this evening will be open, deliberative and transparent with respect to the future uses in and around the civic campus. So there will be baseball played on Renneke Field in 2025. No decision has been made to close that facility for use as a baseball field as it has been for decades here in the community. And we look forward to inviting all members of the community and other stakeholder groups here in Mequon and Thiensville to participate in our visioning process for the master plan as we kick it off in early 2025. Secondly, with the retirement of Police Chief Pat Pryor, the Police Commission has now met twice in terms of determining next steps for the process that they will be following to select the, the city's next police chief. As part of those deliberations, they will be hosting, the Police Commission that is, a community listening session here in these council chambers next Thursday evening, December 19th, beginning at 6:30 PM. This will be an opportunity for members of the community to share their perspective, perspectives, excuse me, on the future of community policing here in Mequon. And the commission will use that information to inform next steps within the hiring and selection process. For those who are unable to make the meeting next Thursday evening, there is also a brief online survey that's available on the city website that any interested residents or other parties can take through Wednesday, January, or I'm sorry, Thursday, January 2nd. Those survey results will also be shared with the Police Commission as they deliberate next steps. And lastly, here on Monday, property tax bills were mailed out to all property owners here in Mequon and the Finance Department is geared up and ready to take payments every day between now and January 31st. Payments will be accepted between 8:30 and 4:00 PM in person. And here at City Hall, staff will not be accepting cash payments, any, any cash payments that exceed $500. Residents who are not able to make it in between 8:30 and 4:00 also have the option of paying their property taxes online through a portal that's available on the city website and Port Washington State Bank, our designated bank here with the city, also is set up to take payments at both their Mequon branch and their Thiensville branch through January 31st. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Good reminder about the, about the information swirling around about Renneke Field. There's a lot of people with a lot of different opinions and some of the things that are being posted on social media are frankly irresponsible and are actually going to subvert a good planning process we hope to embark on this next year. So if you read it on the internet, it might not be true. Shocking. Next up, we have 12 sets of, we have the consent agenda, which comprises of 12 sets of minutes from boards and commissions and a staff report as well as one resolution. The one we just considered is the Sewer Utility District Commission that passed five to. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to exclude Resolution 4159 from the consent.
Okay, there's a motion to exclude item M from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through L?
So moved.
Okay. So motion of second to vote on items A through L, 6A through 6L. All who's in favor of approving those items, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those 12 items are approved. We will now discuss Resolution 4159, which is item M. And I'm assuming someone's got something to say since we've held it over for discussion. Alderman Meyer, you want to lead that off? Or does someone, one of the dissenting votes from our previous vote?
It's not going to be me because I'm going to change my vote, so.
Does anyone want to talk about Resolution 4159 or make a motion? To approve.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any comments on Resolution 4159? Or if there are none, we can call the roll.
Alderman Tlaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
No.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
No.
Alderman Bratt.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
No.
Four to three. Motion carries. Next up, we have one ordinance first reading. First readings will not be acted upon unless there's a suspension of the rules. I'm not sure we're suggesting that's the case here tonight, but ordinance 2024 1673 and ordinance amending the following property for, for following the property located, the following properties at 2803 and 2909 West Mequon Road. The city's zoning map within chapter 58 of the Mequon Municipal Code from single-family residential one-acre R3 to institu- institutional public service IPS and a planned unit development overlay, PUD. And the city's land use map from residential one and a half acre to institutional. This was recommended to the Planning Commission on December 2nd and is a first reading. Moving on to ordinances, we have no ordinances for consideration this evening. So what carries us to resolutions? The first of which is Resolution 4160, a resolution awarding the sale of $6,955,000 in general obligation notes. There's a typo in the item on the agenda that our finance director kindly reminded me of. The materials within all reflect that amount, but the title is off by $40,000. So general obligation promissory notes, series 2025A, providing the form of the notes and levying tax in connection therewith. Recommendation was, this was approved by finance and personnel earlier this evening and it's here for our consideration this evening. Are there any questions or a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 4160.
Motion in a second. Just so the public at home can follow along, there's a, a short list of projects this will be used for. Administrator Jones has them handy here, so I can read them to you. A good chunk of that is for the city's annual road program, the next three years of those, those improvement projects. three years of those improvement projects. Another project is for the long anticipated brush site improvement, making that more accessible to residents and improving access and controlling access, as well as a couple of parking lots, improvements to the council chambers we sit in tonight, so we'll actually get modern audiovisual equipment and fix the HVAC system that fails routinely, and those are just some of the projects you'll see coming your way if this item is approved tonight. So, there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If there is none, please call the roll.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Talaco?
That resolution is approved. The next up is Resolution 4161, a resolution approving a five-year agreement for implementation and operation of an enterprise land management system with Tyler Technology Incorporated of Yarmouth, Maine, in the amount of $712,694. This was recommended earlier this evening by Finance and Personnel as well.
Move approval, Resolution 4161.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments from the rest of the council? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Talaco? Alderman Meyer?
That resolution two passes. Onto Resolution 4162, a resolution adopting the compensation plan for nonrepresented employees for fiscal year 2025. This was also recommended earlier this evening by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Move the resolution? I mean, yeah.
So, we have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is, there's no dollar figure attached to this, but it's quasi-budgetary, so it's also, call the roll.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Talaco? Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
That resolution passes as well. Onto Resolution 4163, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a professional services agreement for the development of a civic campus master plan in an amount not to exceed of $60,000. There's a recommendation forthcoming from Public Works.
Public Works approved of it, and I move the motion, move the Resolution 4163. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Alderman Meyer?
I was just wondering, was it just the four companies that had submitted to it?
I can speak to that real quick. We received seven proposals from seven very good firms. It was kind of hard to pick, so we, we had a committee of staff members. I participated. Alderman Brat, with his expertise in parks and planning from Milwaukee County, participated in the process. We each independently evaluated them, and we had sought to narrow it down to two or three. The proposals were so close, we decided to bring in a fourth, and this Friday, we will be interviewing them in person to sharpen the pencil. It was really hard to pick, just based off the written materials, because frankly, we had, we had seven good proposals. We probably had four excellent ones, and so we're going to do that this Friday and make a decision shortly thereafter. Any other comments or questions? Now, we have a motion in a second. If there are no other comments or questions, please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Talaco? Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
And Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Onto Resolution 4164, a resolution awarding a construction contract for the city brush site improvement project to Vinton Construction Company of Two Rivers, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed of $1,014,191. There's a recommendation forthcoming from Public Works this evening.
Public Works approved of it, and I move Resolution 4164.
Second.
Motion in a second. Alderman Parrish?
Thank you. I'm just trying to remember how the ARPA funding flowed, because I thought a majority of the site was being paid by ARPA, and then tonight, when we talked about the loan borrowing, seems like part of the loan or the note borrowing proceeds is for the brush site. So, did the cost go over, or is it, was it the environmental?
Director Lundin will give us a quick refresher on the numbers. We spoke about this conceptually a few months ago, and at a high level, the ARPA funding covers the gate, but the other improvements to the driveway and the, well, there'll be no building anymore, but the, it was the concrete and asphalt work that was not covered.
Correct. So, that is the breakdown. The automated gate is paid for by ARPA, and the parking lot is the right-of-way asset management funds or the parking lot funds.
I think we, we last looked at this in-
Which has historically been funded through borrow-
I think it was August, when it was before us, a committee of the whole, and there was potential consideration of a building, which we did not choose to go forward with. Then there was a narrow vote on whether to include a pad to build a building, which passed 5 to 4 on my tie break, but we subsequently got sharper numbers on those, that item, and we, internally at the staff level, we struck that item because the cost almost doubled from the initial estimate, so we took that item out. The original estimate for that was $165,000, and it came in at $120,000 more than that.
Thank you. I was just trying to determine if it was overages, or if it was because of the decision we made. But we'll stick with our decision, I suppose. Thank you.
No worries. This is a good spot, a good time to revisit it, especially as we're about to take final action on it.
And valid to clarify that it does not include any remediation then, so it's just the automated gate and the construction of the parking lot. Well, building would require remediation, so we're not preparing for that at this point.
Agreed.
Now, a good reminder for everyone, and the public who's watching at home, who may have missed the committee of the whole meeting a few months ago. Any other questions from anyone on the council? Or a motion? Wait a minute, we had a motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Well... Okay, if there are no other questions, please call the roll. Oh, go ahead. We'll pause for the comment.
I, I struggle with this one. A million dollars for a brush site with our priorities. I just don't know if this is a must. The ARPA funding is great, let's get the gate. I really am struggling at $800,000 for pavement, when Mequon needs other things. So, I know that this has been marked as an important thing. I just see this, I can see this money spent better else, besides putting some brush on, some fresh concrete, because it's going to make things easier to move it around. I'm just really struggling with this approval tonight.
Do you care to come back up, Director Lundin? I'm not, the concrete isn't for putting the brush on, it's for the heavy equipment that moves in and out, I believe, so we don't have to repair the rutting that occurs. But I'm, I don't want to speak entirely for you. I'm just recanting what I recall from August.
Correct, and the right-of-way asset management fund and the borrowing associated with it has typically, or at least over the last two borrowings, has also included our parking lot monies, which the brush site is the next available one to do so. So, the bid did include contemplation of either asphalt or concrete. In this case, we are recommending concrete. It is net savings of $190,000 to do asphalt instead, but would still be $735,000 to redo as asphalt.
It would need to be replaced-
Sooner.
Sooner. Concrete will exceed the lifespan of the asphalt by 10, 10 to 15 years?
Correct.
I think it was in the staff report.
And it is because of the grinding machine itself that we have to bring in for the brush in addition to the loaders, and perhaps most impactful is the turning movements of all of the vehicles that just are a lot harder on asphalt, and if you've ever been at an intersection where people stop at the same location, it can cause asphalt to slide.
Yeah, that's why all the bus stops in the city of Milwaukee, if they're asphalt, they're rutted up because of the stopping of the bus, and that's why they've been moving to concrete over time when they can get to it as well.
Mayor?
Sure.
Weren't you going to consider a hybrid, where the areas where there was going to be heavy usage was going to be concrete, and then the rest was going to be asphalt? Are there any opportunities for savings? Perhaps this is not the meeting for that.
I think we asked for both quotes at the last meeting in August.
And then a decision was decided, then we asked for like a hybrid version, I recall.
I don't recall that. The problem with that is the, the actual preparation of the surface would be different then, because of the depth of base for each of the materials, and then the depth of the concrete versus the depth of the asphalt. So, my, well, we didn't fit it that way, so it's just my guess that it would actually be more expensive, because it would be more work for the contractor to have the two different types of base material for the two different types of pavement.
Okay. Well, I am having a little buyer's remorse, as you heard, but I am going to honor our strategic plan, and we made the decision, so I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Brat?
Yes.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Yes.
Alderman Talaco?
No.
Alderman Meyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Yes.
That resolution carries. Onto Resolution 4165, a resolution approving the purchase and installation of a truck box with wedge tank application, a universal snowplow and wing package, and additional truck components from Universal Truck Equipment of Galesville, Wisconsin, at a total cost of $183,314. It's a recommendation forthcoming from Public Works this evening.
Public Works approved of it, and I would like to move Resolution 4165.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on this item for staff? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Talaco? Alderman Meyer? Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Onto Resolution 4166, a resolution approving the purchase of a replacement plow truck chassis from Lakeside International Trucks of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, in the amount not to exceed, well, in the amount of, maybe it was not to exceed on this one, of $127,863. Recommendation also forthcoming from Public Works.
And once again, Public Works approved of this, and I would like to move Resolution 4166.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions from anyone on the council? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Talaco? Alderman Meyer? Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Upstain.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
The ayes have it again. We've made it, it's our last resolution on this lengthy list of resolutions. Resolution 4167, a resolution awarding a contract for the replacement of various HVAC units and other upgrades within the council chambers at the city of Mequon, City Hall, to Selsner Orange Construction of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, in the amount not to exceed of $975,000. Another recommendation forthcoming from Public Works this evening.
And once again, Public Works approved of it, and I'd like to move Resolution 4167.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments on this item? Alderman Gebhardt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a quick question. I'm not questioning the need to have the work done or the cost. What I, what I am questioning is generally, in a, in an older building, there's more unforeseen conditions that you run into as you complete the work, and I'm questioning the amount of contingency that you have approved in this, which is noted as 2%. It seemed to be on the lower side, and just didn't want to have to hold up the process in the event that there were some unforeseen conditions that might lead to something more than that? Can somebody speak to that?
I can. You are correct. There are portions of the contract that I think were less concerned, the windows, for example, that were less concerned about needing contingency for. There's just less variables and unknowns related to it, so I think we were comfortable with the recommendation of the 975, although we're always happy if you provide authorization for more.
I'm not looking to spend more, so-
Well, and we wouldn't spend, I mean-
Please, please don't take that the wrong way, but it did catch me a little bit off guard, given the fact that generally, we go ahead and put a 10% contingency when we're approving budget or cost items like this.
And this is-
And this is a bigger ticket item-
Yes.
-in an older facility, and what I'm hearing you say is that there's probably some individual items or costs in here that really aren't going to be variable costs that we're not going to run into a lot, so really, it's 10% off of maybe a lesser amount here that you think might need some contingency.
Yes, and this did have a rather extensive design process, where we had a lot of involvement to, to help, help us try any way to anticipate any of those unforeseen, and we just recognized that obviously, if we ran into something significant, we'd have to come back to you for authorization.
Thank you.
Administrator Jones?
And Mayor, just following up on Director Lundin's very last point, that is an alternative option relative to this project, and should we experience, Alderman Gebhardt, a cost overrun, for instance, we could come back to this body with a change order if it is in excess of $25,000. I have authorization to move forward expenditures of less than $25,000. In this case, if we were to experience costs above that figure, we would come back to you for, for that approval.
Perfect. Thanks.
Yeah, we did pay for a, an extensive plan, I think it was around $90,000 for the plan, so there's a little bit more upfront work on this project than most. And we've got the safety net of coming back and asking for more money if we need to, but... Alderman Parrish?
Selsner Orange is a general contractor, so that would mean that they're outsourcing to a HVAC contractor, which means we're probably paying a project management fee on that. Is that the case?
That's not the way that it was broken down, but yes, we would have expected in a project like this, because of the various components, it's not a window contractor, it's not a flooring contractor, so in, we, we were expecting there to be a general contractor, and that helps us from the perspective of having one contractor to be responsible for all of that project management, rather than us coordinating all of those subcontractors and potentially having the expense of moving all of them through at the same time.
If that's your recommendation, I agree. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Meyer? Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Talaco?
That resolution passes as well. We have no specified unfinished business from prior meetings. We have no specified new business. We do have one potential closed session item pertaining to possible acquisition of 11015 North Market Street. The common council may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 print 1 print E for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and then may reconvene into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Talaco? Alderman Meyer? Mayor Nurban?
Aye. Aye. I can't say for certain whether or not we'll need to take action afterwards, so we'll, we might be back. We'll, we'll close the meeting here, we won't close it in closed session, so leave you with a cliffhanger. Thanks, and we'll see you in some unspecified amount of time.